Recording, just so everyone knows.
Just kidding, don't say it. I love my water. I thought I could see you sitting down, that's standing right back up. The man in charge says we can't.
I think we're good now. By the time we stand up, it's okay.
Let's call this meeting to order and we'll do pledge allegiance, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, who called, I guess?
Katie Johnston. Diana Mendoza. Nikki Pettit. Joe Robinson. Tyler Wilson. John Brother.
Thank you. Agenda. The additions, corrections, modifications.
Don't read that motion, it's on the screen. Let's motion to approve agenda, not taxation.
Make a motion for that?
Motion to approve the agenda, removing and correcting items as presented.
Nikki did that. Second?
I'll second it.
Thank you, Katie.
Moto Johnson.
Aye.
Katie Johnston.
Aye.
Diana Mendoza.
Aye.
Nikki Pettit.
Aye.
Joe Robinson. Tyler Wilson.
Aye.
John Brother.
Aye.
Think we have one speaker. That's a sweat. Sweat.
Ready?
Yes, we're ready for it.
Just gonna make it quick.
Thank you for coming.
Huh?
Thank you for coming.
Oh, well, thank you. To speak here tonight. There are some things I was trying to understand, and as a community member, and I'm hoping you can elaborate. You did a snapshot of the Illinois report card, the assessment. But I was going through, and I haven't been following every note of what was going on with Champaign Unit Four. But I did pay attention to the resolution that the Village of Savoy passed tried to keep Cary Bucia Neighborhood School. And I was looking over their information, and just yesterday I pulled up the report card for Rantoul City Schools. And it was quite similar. Cary Bucia, equity issues. We have our white students, our students of two or more races. They are meeting or just slightly below state standards, which is great. But then our black and brown students and Hispanic students are falling short. So it's almost like an Oreo. Outside is good, and then you got that nougat in the middle that's full of calories and is bad for you. Maybe that's a bad analogy. But what are we doing to address the equity issues in the school? I also noticed that we have very few students meeting state standards. What is being done to address that specifically? Because our minority children are not achieving at the same rate. And it's been consistent, and it's not COVID, because I went back and attempted, I spent hours because I tried to navigate that site. It's 2019 and before, this has been a pattern that has been set for the past 10 to 12 years, if not longer. And so I was just wondering if you can explain or provide me or provide the community, the public as a whole, an explanation of what is being done to bridge that equity gap in our schools. The other thing I'm trying to understand is social emotional learning. That's something new that I've seen in the schools. Maybe it's not as new to you educators. But are our teachers in the city schools being trained? Are they teaching the kids as a class, as a whole, or are you using it within the curriculum, the classroom? Who is certified and trained in this? What programming have you set up for this social emotional learning? And how is it being implemented throughout the city schools? These are just a few questions I have. And I'm not pointing fingers or anything, but we've got to work together to find a solution and to bring equity within our school system. And we've tried it in the past. We've gone from grade center to neighborhood schools, back to grade centers. You even proposed going to grade centers again. We've done this to self-regulate, self-medicate the problem. But there is a concern, a serious concern. We've got children in our school system who may be fifth or sixth grade, but they're testing at a second and third grade level. And something is wrong when we're not leveling out our teaching. Our curriculum is not being looked at, maybe it's not applicable. Kids learn different. And so we just need to see what we can do to better bridge that gap, to bring those scores up, and make people want to bring their kids to the city schools, to make them move into our communities. Because that is what attracts young families, is good schools to a community. Thank you.
Thank you. Move to number four, please. Consent agenda items.
I will review this. These are all recurring items. One thing I want to highlight is on the donations and grants. We received a donation from William Schulter for $1,000 for Pleasant Acres for students who have needs in the wintertime. The Very Little Foundation is continuing to support our kids, and that is a program that provides books to our students in elementary schools. They contributed another $1,200. I think it's in my notes, but I think they're they're at 10,000 total that they've contributed to date. We have to review our closed session records. So this is, the board's approving that we can destroy the verbatim records, which is normal. Anything older than July of 2021 does not need to be maintained. And then the second part is the semi-annual review of closed meeting minutes. And that is that those minutes will remain as closed meeting minutes. The discipline improvement plan has to be redone. It's not substantially different from when you approved it in October. The annual designation of the superintendent to prepare the fiscal year 2024 budget and the annual approval of forum fitness center agreement. That's where we do, the forum provides a lower cost to our employees, and we also make a contribution on behalf of our employees. So that's a good wellness thing for us, so. And, oh, board policies should definitely be on there, on that list. So we do have regular board policy updates. I did, in the, in your board book, you can see the list of, I think it's probably 40 or 50 different policies that are revisions. They are almost entirely revisions that are changing things in footnotes. There's not really substantial things, and they're responses to recent changes in law, correcting things. One that I want to bring your attention to, because you're all board members, is Board Policy 230. It's, and what this is, is when, after the election in April, typically the board holds organizational meeting and it's required to be done within 28 days. And the law has now changed that we can do that in 40 days, which means we should easily be able to do that at a regular meeting and not have to have a special meeting now to do that. So that was the only one I really wanted to point out to, on there. So the law changed, so we updated the policy to say 40 days instead of 28.
Okay. So, do we need to make a motion here? Motion to approve? Would like to make that motion?
I'll make the motion to approve the consent agenda items, including personal report submitted with stipulation that each individual is required to comply with all requirements for new hires as indicated in Illinois statutes and RCS board policy and procedures, including ratification of bills prepaid by the finance manager under board policy.
Boarding in progress.
Thank you. Just a second? I say.
Second, thank you. Moto Johnson.
Hi.
Katie Johnston.
Aye.
Diana Mendoza.
Aye.
Nikki Pettit. Tyler Wilson.
Aye.
John Brother.
Aye.
Man, now items removed from the consent section now? All right, so up here is Mr. Henderson. I'm gonna bring my laptop and you can drive from that. All right, great.
Alter school program?
Yes. I think you all know Mr. Henderson.
I'm gonna introduce myself, but they all have a copy of the proposal. All right.
Hold on, wait one second, which document is it? So they have it.
Did you put it in the public packet?
No. So they don't have a copy, so you're talking the more indefinite. Okay, I'll provide it to the board after the meeting. You're not being asked to take action tonight. It's an introduction, presentation, and then there's a lot more details in the document. And I apologize, I didn't stick that in there. I'll even upload it into the public packet.
All right, so my name is DeAndre Henderson. I'm the assistant principal at JW ADR. I'm currently the district equity facilitator, and I'd love to answer some of Ms. Swett's questions at a point. Maybe not right now, but I will answer some of her questions. And so some of my background is I have a master's degree in the social foundations of education that I got from Western Illinois University. I'm a former alternative school teacher. So I'm going to propose to you an alternative school. And one of the things you know about my background is I have a lot of passion for alternative schools, as I was a former alternative school teacher. I'm a former certified special education instructor, and I'm a former juvenile detention counselor. And one of the reasons why I mentioned the last, because I did not want our school to be like a prison. I know what a prison looks like. I have worked at a prison. But each one of these things have led me to discover new things about learning and how students learn and what environment students are invested in. So each one of my former capacities has allowed me to kind of develop this idea that I'm gonna approach with you guys today for an alternative school. So, the purpose of the proposed alternative school. So the purpose of the alternative school is to meet the needs of every student within the district who may benefit from a non-traditional school environment. We know some of our students have unique needs. Currently, our traditional educational environments are not equipped to meet those students' needs. Working in the school districts for as long as I have and working at ADR after COVID, we have seen the needs of our students change. They haven't changed drastically. A lot of people say, oh, COVID ruined our kids and things like that. That's not what happened. COVID did not ruin our kids. But we, COVID has shown us how much support our students need, especially from adults in their lives, consistently, inconsistency, and consistent support. So we want our students to be able to succeed when they reach the high school level. We want to give them those tools at the middle school level and through RCS to be able to get there and be successful, not to just move through our doors, get to the next level, and then drop out. So we want to be able to, when students are demonstrating that they need more tools, that they need more resources, we want to be able to meet those students with those tools and resources. So the rationale for this proposal is Rantoul City School is uniquely positioned to create its own system of alternative education within our own district, which would alleviate the transfer or the need for transfer to ROE safe schools and decrease the amount of in-school and out-of-school suspensions in the district. We know that the pandemic, socioeconomic distress, cultural, and other factors have created an opportunity gap for some of our most under-resourced students. This gap will not be overcome within a traditional school setting, but rather a setting where students are better supported individually and responded to holistically. And that, all that goes to say is, we know behavior is a form of communication. And our students have been attempting to communicate with us for quite a while about, you know, what they need. And oftentimes, as a school district and as a school system, our response to our students is, you need to change to fit the system. We have an opportunity here to change the system to fit our students. Because I think too often we put out kids' lights, kids' passions. We don't nurture their strengths when we tell a student, your behavior is not okay in this environment. What if their behavior is what is going to transition them or make them that next leader in the next generation? Because they're loud? Are they a student that can't be in a classroom? Because later on in life, we're gonna call that person vocal and boisterous, and we're gonna say they speak their mind, or they have, they're strong and opinionated, right? So these are things that sometimes, in a bigger, larger traditional educational environment, could be disruptive to a classroom, but that doesn't mean that kid is disruptive. So we have to look at the system and changing the system to be able to meet our students' needs. And that's what I think we could do with this alternative school. So the proposal is Bulldog's Rise Program, responsive individualized student education. And so kind of now I just want to talk to you, walk you through what the school day would look like, what the school would look like, and how we would be able to do the things that I said we would do and meet those students' needs and have the system fit the student instead of the student fit the system. So our vision and mission, the vision of the Bulldog Rise Program is to create an educational environment that gets every student what they need to succeed. I'm sure you've seen a mission and vision, or a vision statement that's similar to that before. When we talk about equity, that's the, one of the most basic definitions of equity, right? Giving students what they need to succeed, no matter what that is. We say that a lot in education, but we often don't do it. We say, we give students what they need within the confines of what's okay in school or the confines of what fits into board policy or what fits into school rules, right? If what they need is someone to sit with them all day and have a conversation with them, that's not appropriate, because that kid missed too much instructional time. So this vision of the school is gonna be a lived one, one that they truly get what they need to succeed. And one of those ways we're gonna do it is through our mission. The Bulldog's Rise Program will exist to create a community where students have opportunities to connect education with real-world experience. Students will be able to express themselves fully and effectively. We will not frown on a student for how they express themselves. We will not judge a student for how they express themselves. We will not tell them that's not appropriate for this environment. This environment is meant and made for you to be able to express yourself. And in order to do that, the last sentence was uniquely important to me. Suspensions out of school are only used as a last resort to ensure the safety of students and staff. That last sentence is just put in there to reiterate in our mission that we're not suspending kids. We're not telling kids that their education is not important. We're not telling them that in order to escape what they don't want to do, they can make this behavior or have this behavior and send them away. It's very important to me that we use restorative approaches to discipline always. We do do a lot at ADR currently, but what we do see is that because there are so many other students affected by students' behavior sometime, we find ourselves making choices that are best for the whole and not best for the student. So that's what this mission tells us right here. Each and every student specifically is ensured that we are going to give them what they need to succeed. So the proposed school day of the alternative school would start at 9:25 is when instructional time would start. But at 9:20, doors would open. This would be after ADR's, students are in there already in school and their day has started. This alternative school would start. It would also release at 2:30. They would rotate classes. And so I do want to draw, I guess, take this time to kind of draw some distinctions between this program and the alternative program that we currently already have. So when I'm proposing this alternative program, it's not from scratch. We already have Bulldog Academy, which is an alternative program, which is inside of ADR at this moment. And it's, it has a schedule where students are just about the same amount of time that they're in there. They are being bused from school, they get out about 2:10. But currently, it's in one room inside of a building. So we, we can talk about this alternative school in multiple different stages, but one stage is we need to get those kids into a space where they can learn. We need to get those kids into a space where they don't feel like they are imprisoned in a room inside of a school, right? We need to have the resources to have an identity of their own. So those kids stay in the classroom all day. This school allows them to transition classes, have multiple different teachers, get multiple different subjects. We're gonna use a hybrid model of how we educate our students, but this allows them to have different classmates, to see different things, to explore different things with different people, and socialize them better. Currently, our Bulldog kids only see each other, really. They're out for PE and they see the other kids in PE, but the rest of the day, they see the other eight, nine kids in the room. When we're trying to socialize kids, how good are we doing if we only expose them to eight or nine kids? So these are just example class choice proposals. You know, we're at, we're at a, we are at a stage in society where we can't keep trying to force curriculum down kids' throat that they're not interested in or not engaged in. We have to be able to find what engages them, what they're interested in, and make the curriculum fit that, right? So what, some of the ideas that we have, like, we know our kids love social media. Why don't we use that as a class, right? Show them how digital photography, web design, marketing, video editing, and ethics. Talk about safe use. Talk about what pictures go out on social media, what happens to them? What happens to their copyright, the ownership of those images? Let them learn things that they would learn in school anyway in a different manner that they're already motivated by. Culinary arts. You know, culinary arts, anybody who's cooked, anybody who's been a chef before knows that culinary arts and the food service industry uses skills that you need and you got from school. Fractions, conversions, chemistry. You know, when you're heating things up, when you're boiling, knowing what that reaction is gonna do allows you to understand it better. So what we're doing is we're contextualizing the things that we learn in school, but we're starting with the end. We're starting with the food, and then we're gonna break it down and see how we got to the food. Mindfulness. We know that mindfulness in schools is a big push right now. So you and your body, a class that could incorporate yoga and mindfulness into the curriculum, but within this class, you're also able to talk about psychology, how the brain works. You're talking about body, what parts of your body? What's the vagus nerve? How is it, how is it activated? You are able to talk about things that kids can see, feel, touch, interact with every day. It's not this arbitrary idea that you're gonna use this when you get older. You're gonna use it right now. It's, there are ideas to address and strategies to address the trauma, right? Again, those were all proposals, and we had more. When you see the full proposal, there's more class proposals in there, too. But they're just ideas. There are lots of things that we can do, and there's lots of resources within this community that we could use to teach those things. We want to be a career, a school-to-career pipeline and not a school-to-prison pipeline. We want to be able to take kids and teach them skills at an early age so that when they leave us, they can be citizens and give back to our community, right? A big part of this, too, is the intensive social, emotional, and mental health support. Ms. Swett, we could talk social, emotional a little bit later, too. Bulldog's Rise Program will be focused on social, emotional learning and mental health support. And I think a good thing, like, what is social, emotional learning? I think it's a good time to answer that question. Social, emotional learning is the idea that we are teaching kids about how they feel. We are teaching kids about how they feel, how they behave, how they interact with society. So we, we know, like I said, behavior is a form of communication, and all behaviors are symptoms of emotions, right? So you have emotions, and then you behave based on your emotions. We teach kids to identify those emotions. We teach kids how to cope with some of their emotions, but really how to work through those emotions and have an outcome or a behavior from those emotions which is beneficial to them and beneficial to everyone around them, inappropriate for whatever setting that they're in. So part of our kids. So part of our kids that end up getting suspended in school and out of school and having um these what we call blowups or crisis situations that need to be dis- uh de-escalated is they're they're communicating through their behavior. They're standing up, walking around the class when they're supposed to be sitting down. They're throwing things when they're supposed to be learning. They've been communicating, but they haven't been getting the right response for them to get uh their needs met. They're communicating, they have a need, they haven't gotten their needs met, then they blow up and now they're suspended out of school because of the blowup. We need to be able to get them to communicate in a different way. Um, trained mental health professionals can design and support learning within the school that will help them get to that point. Uh, structured therapeutic group and individual social work sessions will be embedded in the daily schedule for all students. We have three social workers in Ader right now currently. And that's quite a bit of social. I mean, for I've worked in five different districts and at a middle school, all my middle schools have been bigger. Um, it's been, that's the most social workers that we've had, right? That's a lot. Yet, they very rarely work with our general education population. Most of their time is spent working with our special education population, which I believe is about twenty percent of our population. So eighty percent of our population does not get social work services. This school would allow a daily schedule of social work services, getting to see a trained professional to get those services that they need. I mean, just because they have an IEP doesn't mean they don't struggle with mental health and especially at middle school. It's I I've talked to parents all the time about hormonally where kids are in middle school. They need people to talk to. That's the biggest thing they want at that time. We also wanna be able to au- offer wraparound services. These are gonna be our most needy kids and we have to wrap around them as a community and as a school in order for this school to work, in order for them to be successful ever. Um, eh even the kids that we have now that are very disruptive, without parent support, there is not a lot we can do with those kids. When we have parent support, when we have good communication with parents, when we're able to uh pull in the parents to the school environment and vice versa, pull the school into the home environment, that's when we see success. It's very hard to do that with five hundred and forty students, but with an alternative program of about sixty, it's gonna be a lot easier to do that and focus on each one of those kids' individual needs and making those plans to meet them. More class choice for uh proposals. Um, so how are, how do you get to the school, right? So I think this talking about the nitty gritty, how how do we get into this school? So we're gonna start it as an alternative place for for students. There's two ways we're gonna get in. The first one is gonna be for students who are exhibiting behavioral concerns within their homeschool environment. Um, there's a specific process that's outlined in the board proposal that goes into more detail than just this does. Uh, but it there's gonna be a specific process. Like I like the statement that I wrote, we believe that most students, their homeschool placement will be the most beneficial for that student. And that's truly something I believe. For most students, for most students, they need to be in their homeschool. Um, but there are some, not most, there are some, that that's not the best place for them. And that should be a decision that is determined um after all of the interventions from the school have been exhausted. Um, and there are going to be gatekeepers of this. Uh, one thing we won't have, one thing I will not have as a person who is pitching this school is um a warehouse for children, uh putting children in a place to get rid of them out of sight, out of mind. We're not dealing with that, right? No, it's have you done what you needed to do? Have you identified the needs of the student and have you identified you are unable to meet those needs? Um, have you put the interventions in place? Because again, moving a kid from their home-based school, which, you know, depending on what grade they are, kids they've gone to school with and all that for a while, um, is not something to be taken lightly. The second option is application. We also know that there are kids who don't exhibit the behaviors that normally get kids suspended in and out of school that need a different placement. We have we have what we call externalizers and internalizers and we have kids that will internalize their feelings and emotions and shut down. Instead of lashing out, they shut down. And so when they shut down, that might look like stop coming to school. That might look like head down on the desk um over and over. That could look like um, you know, always going to the nurse's office and going home because I'm sick, right? And those are things that are telling us, those are again behaviors that are telling us, they're trying to communicate with us. And those kids might want to go to a smaller setting. Five hundred and forty kids, it's too many. Sixty, I can do. Um, they could be the application kids. There might be some kids, once we get started, who just wanna try it. They want a different environment, a different place where they can, you know, start over. I know, um, you know, there are kids who, you know, feel like they're being bullied by the crowd that they're in and they might feel like, you know what, I wanna start over in this new environment, start something new, reinvent myself, this might be a good place for me. There'll be an application process for that, for those kids, cuz we don't want to. We're not, one, we're not, like I said, not a warehouse for our our black and brown kids that we don't wanna deal with behaviorally. Uh, but also we we have our own identity. We have, we're a school that kids will want to come to, not a school that kids feel like they're being punished to go to. And so there's an entrance pro- um process and there's an exit process, which you'll see in the board packet as well. Um, and those are very spelled out. Who has to be at the table, who has to sign off, who has to agree for both of those. Um, the proposal, um, we want to be operational at the beginning of the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four school year. Uh, the goal is to serve approximately sixty students from the fifth to the eighth grade. Uh, it would require twelve and a half uh staff members. Um, that would be fully staffed. Um, running on the bare minimum would probably be nine staff members. Uh, some would be transfers current from current positions already and that's spelled out in the board proposal. Um, this proposal would require leasing a separate facility located in Rand. And some of the numbers and things like that are in that board proposal uh that you guys could have a look at to see kind of estimate estimate-wise how much this would actually cost. So again, working for five districts, uh RCS has shown me so far that it has been willing to do whatever it takes to give students what they need. Um, when we have ideas or we need resources at Ader, we get those resources. We um are able to implement those ideas. You know, across the nation, not just here. The numbers that Miss Sweat talked about are not just champagne, not just their bed, and not just Rand Tool. Black and brown students are, the opportunity gap has been that big for years. Um, and it's not just a here problem. But to answer the question, what can we do to address that opportunity gap? Start changing the educational system and how we use the educational system to fit our students' needs. So I think, you know, this is a first step for the district. I think it it allows us to really free up and see what can we do if we change everything completely. And maybe that's what education needs, so we stop seeing those numbers. It's a complete overhaul, a complete rethinking of the way we see education. All right, I've talked for a while. That was more than ten minutes. I'm sorry.
I'll start off with, I just, I wanna thank Yonra. He came to me with an idea um early this year. And uh I said, let's get a proposal together and he has really taken this uh to heart and um, obviously, I think you can see who would be leading this school. Um, that would ultimately be a board decision, but I think it's pretty obvious that if we get this place up and running, that it's gonna be Mr. Henderson um implementing it. I don't wanna call it your baby cuz that sounds weird and I said it anyway. But um, it's a special project for him and I I know what we're working on behind the scenes in terms of staff that we're trying to get lined up. Um, and we were, as he said, we really have to, these kids are failing, the ones we're talking about. They're already failing right now. And the system at Ader right now is also failing them. So we're trying, that's what this comes down to, is uh doing something different because the kids that will be placed there, so to speak, are kids that if we don't do something different, we know those are the kids that we're gonna see in the newspaper and we're gonna see not graduating from the high school. Um, and we've both been knowing it long enough that unfortunately, we know who those kids are. Um, before it happens sometime, so. Next board meeting, um, we will talk about this more and you'll be asked to. There'll be some things to approve, so hopefully we'll have a lease that we would approve. Um, there's some additional staffing that uh you would need to approve um for us to get this going. But I, you may have questions for Mr. Henderson.
What questions do you guys have?
Yeah, I do actually. Um, unless I misunderstood you, what grade level you start in fifth through eight?
Fifth through eight.
And you and you, location?
Uh, we did discuss it in closed session and I can update you.
No, that's the, okay, so that's what you're talking about. Um, so basically you're saying what you're saying is you're gonna move kids that we feel they're gonna be, in your words, kids that may not graduate high school and or so we're just pulling them out. But my question to you, um, not saying I disagree with anything. I like what you were saying. I I understand a lot of what you were saying. Where's the educational, the academics come in? Where do they learn that?
So each one of those classes is academically focused. So even if you, like culinary arts is an academic class, the academic rigor will be part of each one of their classes. Um, there will also be, and there's a part that currently, our kids in Bulldog Academy are on something that's called Edgenuity on that online educational program. Um, so that's an ed- it's an online program that gets the standards met for um core content. So they could do reading, math, social studies, science, and PE all through the online programming. Um, certified teachers will be teaching classes however. So just because you see like financial literacy and concerns that, right, that's a a a context contextualized math class, that's math. Um, if you look at, like I said, here with culinary arts and social media by design, social media design, we uh, social media by design is kind of like an elective class that we currently have. We have a um, a STEM class that does some um video editing and some um, some videography classes. Um, we've had classes and I've seen photography. Um, I've seen classes be like an elective, so those career-focused classes. So these are classes that are going to be meeting some of the standards which are required to be met for the middle school class. We're just, we're just packaging them differently. We're repackaging them so that our kids can buy in to what they need to learn. Um, it's very easy to say, go to this reading class and read this book, right? Or learn these standards, learn how to um, learn how to uh learn how to comprehend, you know, text or a long text or things like that. But it's very different to say, read this and then tell me how you're gonna, what you're gonna do with it or how you're gonna make it fit you. So I don't want these classes to look like, oh, they're just hanging out. They're gonna get the same educational standards that all middle school kids get.
Better. And better.
And better, yeah.
Because that's what we need.
Yes, and better. That, they're gonna get the standards, but we're gonna do it better, is what I wanna say. We're gonna do the standards.
I believe in what you're saying is we need change. If we don't have change, we're not gonna get better. I mean, we've already proven that. Um, one thing I wanted, another thing I wanted to ask you also, how's that affect, you said IEP, you mentioned it. Are we talking about IEP?
This is gen ed kids. So we do not, we would not have the staffing to provide IEP services.
Well, what I mean is I thought that's what I heard you say. IEP, the word IEP, maybe, I I could be wrong.
I I don't, if I said it, I miscommunicated, but I don't think I said it.
Of course, it's recorded, so. What happens with those programs? I mean, that's what we're supposed to be doing with IEP and five oh four kids anyways, right? We're supposed to be doing what you're exactly saying in the schools and that's what we have staffing for. But if we're not following those, then it ain't gonna work, right? Just like if you get your program going and you don't follow what you're saying, it ain't gonna work. Same difference, right?
Correct. Is it, what what was, what was the question? Sorry.
The question was, how would that affect, but you already said we're not talking about IEP and five oh four kids. You're just talking about
So five oh four could come in. IEP, we would not have the ability to provide the legal requirements of an IEP. Some, like if you were like, if you only had social work services, cuz we would have a social worker. There's not, in the proposal, there's not a special education teacher that's a part of the proposal to be a part of it. So we wouldn't be able to take any IEP students um at this time, but I'm hoping it grows and we could expand and get IEP services in there um as well. But at this time, the proposal would not be to take any IEP students, but we could take five oh four students.
Okay, you got approximately sixty. Um, just wondering, how'd you come up with that number?
Um, so staffing-wise, I I did one to fifteen and that's a, that's a uh good number for teachers to student ratio, one to fifteen.
Okay.
Um, if you, in the proposal, you'll see last year, um, in the twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two school year, there were thirty-four students who were suspended five or more days from Ader. That wasn't the total number of suspension, but five or more days, we had thirty-four students. Um, each one of those students would be students who would be eligible to come to the program. Um, we had six students who withdrew to homeschool, um, and I can tell you, knowing each one of those six students, why they withdrew to homeschool, right? And I know for, I think five out of the six, an alternate placement for them would have kept them from withdrawing to homeschool. So that puts us at forty, which leaves twenty open seats for kids who may not be screaming at us, I need help, but want a change of seat or you want something like that. So those applications that go in there. Um, you know, I don't, if I'm being honest, I don't think we'll start off at sixty. I think it'll have to build, right? You'll have to build it. I would love to have sixty at the beginning, but I think you're you're gonna have to, it's do what you say. Show that you're gonna do what you said you're gonna do to get, to get people to trust that. So I don't think it'll start off at sixty. We might be looking at twenty, thirty, forty when we start off. But when we start off and we show, you know, we're doing what we said we're gonna do, then that's when we can start to have people really trusted us in sending our students there.
Yeah, I I agree with you, but one, one child is just important, is sixty. So if you start out with one, that's better than none, right?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
If we have more questions, can we email you?
Absolutely. And I'll be back, I think, for the next board meeting as well.
Mark it on your calendar. Cancel your plans. My presentation is nine and a half minutes. All right, board members. Are you timing it? Um, I wanna point you to, there's two documents I haven't started yet. This is the one that's in the board packet right now and it's the full annual report document. However, board members, you're gonna wanna follow along probably with this one, which is just the slides. So that way you can actually see what I'm, see the, see the numbers, okay? All right. Um, greetings. This annual report is a snapshot of how RCS performs on a variety of education-related variables. Information included in the report is compiled throughout the school year. Following presentation to the board, this report is published on the RCS website. The purpose of the report is to share school district information in an organized way that is readable and understandable to the public. Nearly all of the information included in this report is available in other state reports, school report cards, and other public databases. This report pulls all information together in a consistent format. Community demographics. Since our last annual report, which was a year ago, um, data indicates that the village of Randool has seen a decrease, has seen decreases in population and overall education levels of adults, while seeing increases in the poverty rate, household income, and owner occupied home values. RCS continues to be a truly unique school district in Illinois. No other K-eight district in downstate Illinois has the level of diversity and the broad range of academic programs and needs. RCS is the most diverse, relatively large, downstate pre-K-eight district. Not only are we racially diverse and that we have high proportions of both Hispanic and African-American and white students, but we also have high proportions of English learners and students with disabilities. Add to this our district's high rate of students from low-income households and a high student mobility rate, and no other district's students look like ours. This report card compares RCS to ten other pre-K-eight districts, which are what's on the screen here. Five that are geographically near RCS and five that are demographically comparable. Other than RCS, there are five total downstate pre- Other than RCS, there are five total downstate pre-K-eight districts with large enrollments, high rates of students from low-income households, and high rates of either English language learners or non-white students. And these districts are used as our demographically comparable districts. Those are Bell Valley, Carbondale, East Moline, Mount Vernon, and Rochelle. Last year, we, previous years, we'd had Streeter. Rochelle is on the list, or Streeter is off. Okay. As you can see here, geographically near districts, which are yellow, uh, are much smaller in enrollment than our demographic comparisons. Only East Moline is larger than RCS. Shown here is our enrollment since twenty fifteen. The overall trend is stable, but we are still one hundred students lower than our pre-COVID twenty twenty enrollment. Special populations affect district programming significantly. Only RCS has a high rate of special education students, high rate of English language learner, high rate of low-income students, and a high rate of student mobility. Of note on this slide is the continued upward trajectory in the number of students identified as English learners. From two thousand fifteen to two thousand twenty-two, we have experienced a forty-seven percent increase in the number of students identified as English learners. Seventy-five point seven percent of RCS students are non-white. RCS is the only district with a relatively, with relatively high rates of African-American and Hispanic students. Typically, districts see high rates of African-American or Hispanic students, not both. Similar to English la-, English learner enrollment, our Hispanic Latino enrollment has increased by fifty percent since twenty fifteen. All right, class sizes. Decreasing class sizes has been a long-term goal of Randool City Schools. We have the lowest average class size of our demographic comparables. Uh, last school year, that was sixteen point three uh students per class. Uh, we have consistently been at or below the average class size for Illinois. Student performance. Of our comparison districts, RCS is performing lowest in ELA and math proficiency on state testing. We are performing better than three comparison districts on access testing of English learners. But those districts have relatively low numbers of English learners. Of note, nearly all school districts in the comparison, I think it's all, but I didn't have time to double check, so I said nearly all. Uh, some, uh, of note, nearly all school districts saw declines in all testing areas. Some districts saw over fifty percent declines in proficiency scores, and most districts are performing below the state average. Previously, Bell Valley and Thomasboro did not have EL subgroups large enough to report, and they now have EL subgroups reported. Uh, employee information. Overall, the district has decreased staffing allocation by two since last school year. Of note, uh, and the board is aware of this already, but as of January ninth, eleven certified teacher positions are filled by permanent substitute teachers. And there are eight certified teacher positions that are vacant. So we are sitting on nineteen positions not filled by qualified teachers. And this slide will illustrate some of the other issue that's compounding here. In twenty nineteen, RCS employed one hundred and fifty-nine certified teachers. In twenty twenty-two, that number was one thirty-six. That's a fourteen and a half percent decrease in the number of teachers. Meanwhile, our enrollment over that same period of time has actually increased. RCS has worked to address this shortage in teachers through decreasing average class sizes, increasing salary, and offering financial incentives. However, many of our classes are now led by substitute teachers. Our teachers' salaries continue to be lower than comparable districts, and there is a direct relationship between teacher retention rates and average salary. At the same time, while we have increased the diversity of our teaching staff, the district's teaching staff is not yet reflective of our student population. And this is the scary slide that came in my mailbox this week. Uh, this slide shows part of our challenge in filling teaching positions. This year's freshman class at UIUC has only one hundred fifty-six students enrolled in education. That's less than two percent of all freshmen at the university. Other employee information. RCS does have the second highest rate of non-white teachers of our comparison districts. But RCS lags in teachers with master's degrees and the overall teacher retention rate. However, our teacher retention rate has increased. Um, we have, part of having less teaching vacancies, though, is keeping the quality teachers we have. So one of the ways we address um the lack of positions that are filled is, once we get people here and are being successful, is that we're able to keep them here. Um, RCS does, has the lowest average teacher salary of our demographic peer districts. And we have one of the lowest average administrator salaries of all of our comparison districts. This slide shows that um RCS has made, our efforts to increase teacher salary, we are seeing that the average teacher salary is increasing, and this is one factor in, in teacher retention. Um, the starting salary this year, I don't quote it off the top of my head, cuz I won't have it right, but the starting salary alone this year will bring up that average salary for next year. The last few slides have to do with financial information. Um, our financial standing has been stable, but according to the state of Illinois' evidence-based funding formula and adequacy targets, RCS is significantly underfunded in order to meet the needs of our unique student population. RCS would need additional annual funds of approximately ten million dollars to meet the state's adequacy target. However, there is a limit on the cost we can expect the local taxpayers to assume. RCS has, by far, the lowest equalized assessed value per pupil. That's the value of taxable property within the district and the second highest tax rate of our comparable districts. In Champagne County, RCS has the lowest EAV per pupil and the highest tax rate. Our relatively high tax rate is an indicator of the support that our community has for our schools, but with relatively low property value, increasing the local property tax yields limited new revenue. Other than Bell Valley, RCS is the most underfunded district of our comparables, according to the state's EBF formula. So on this chart, if a district is at one hundred percent or higher, that means they are adequately funded. Fortunately for RCS, evidence-based funding has resulted in substantial additional funding from the state. However, we are still far short of the EBF adequate funding target. And this slide shows the pretty significant increase in state funding that's been coming to the district. In conclusion, RCS exists to build a stronger community by educating our students. Looking to the future, RCS must continue to determine how to meet and exceed the needs of our exceptionally diverse students and make RCS the community of learners it can be. We must determine how to do this within the boundaries of the limited resources we have. Key considerations include staffing. How do we implement school programming based on obtainable and abstain-, and sustainable staffing numbers? Finances, a need to maximize the money we have through cost-saving efficiencies. And performance, we have to provide alternative programming for students who are not successful in traditional school programming. And that is the end. Questions? That was not fifteen. I, I can easily go fifteen. You know that.
Yes, we do.
Board questions?
Great. Action, resolution, giving notice, withdrawal. I'll stop that.
All right, and we did, uh, I mentioned this, I think it was the November meeting. Uh, in order for us to, in order to potentially exit our liability insurance cooperative, we're in a cooperative for our liability and property casualty, those types of things. The board has to approve a formal resolution notifying our current insurance cooperative. Um, that's required by their bylaws. So in your packet is the formal resolution. Um, what we're doing is, um, it's a formal notice to the insurer that we are seeking can, uh, other, it's not called bids, other proposals for those services to potentially reduce costs for the district.
Any questions, board? I'll make the motion to approve the resolution as presented. You get a second?
I have a second.
Moto Johnson?
Aye.
Katie Johnston?
Aye.
Diana Mendoza?
Aye.
Mickey Pettit?
Aye.
Tyler Wilson?
Aye.
John Brody?
Aye.
A handful of information items from me. Uh, we did have one FOIA that came in actually before the last meeting. Uh, media in your packet, I added one, uh, I'm gonna get the name wrong, it's Ms. Braymire. I think, music teacher at Broad Meadow was named News Gazette's Teacher of the Week, so there's that in your packet now. But that came out today. The regular student discipline report, and there is a report that Jenny Ferrex puts together for one of our after-school pro-, for the after-school program. And that has to be presented to the board in its board packet, and then it's posted on our website. So there's really nothing for you to do, other than we have to be able to stay aboard. That was it for information items from me. Talk about something. Yes, uh, I, I was gonna say, uh, thank the, I know there's several community members here, including Mr. Johnson, that were involved in organizing the MLK event that was at uh, ADR. Uh, Deandre was there DJing, I'm told, but he was working the sound system. I know Miss Pettit was there. Uh, I'm glad that, uh, anytime that the district can partner and help, uh, provide a space for those types of things, we're happy to do that.
Thank you.
But we definitely thank you. Thank you. That was my only comment.
Board members, comments? I just have one short one. Get ready to press that button, hang on. Um, I went to the, last week, they had, last Friday, they had the East Lawn uh winner program, and it was very, very well-attended, very well-presented. And also, for an older person like myself, I really, being a person, I like to see things look nice and the building looks superb. I, I was very pleased with what the grounds looked, with the inside of the building looked. The tenementists, the custodians, and the entire staff can make the building really shine like it would die. And I was very impressed, so I left a note uh to the custodians and conveyed this to other administrators. So uh, that was a well-spent evening, I really enjoyed that, in all facets.
Did you get a handwritten invitation, too?
Yes.
Wasn't that cute?
Yes, it was.
Yes, the kids wrote invitations.
So I guess we're ready for closed session. And motion to move to closed session for appointment, in-employment, compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of specific employees. I made the motion, but somebody left a second.
You're seconding it.
Thank you.
Moto Johnson?
Aye.
Katie Johnston? Diana Mendoza? Mickey Pettit?
Aye.
Tyler Wilson?
Aye.
John Brody?
Aye.
And for the public, we have no action after the closed session, so I am gonna turn off the equipment and we will stop broadcasting. But there is no action after the closed session. I hope to get that.